Okay. All right. Dookie, dookie. Mm-hmm. Ready to go? Sound great, sound great. Good evening, everyone. If you will, I'm gonna ask if you, uh, put your phone on vibrator or salad. And, uh, we're gonna stand and lead off with the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. We're gonna ask our emergency management director, Mr. Albert Jones III, to lead us in prayer.
May we bow our heads, oh gracious eternal Father God, we come to you this evening telling you thank you. Lord, ask you to be in the midst of this meeting, Lord, all the decision making that's being made, Lord. We ask you that they'll be made with you in them. And Lord bless the public, bless the ones that are here. Deep prayers, we pray in darling sons of you, amen.
We're gonna ask our comptroller to lead us in the pledge.
Attention, pledge, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, there you go. Ronnie, your minutes.
Mr. President, you have before you the January the third board minutes. Everybody should have copies. If there are no changes, I would ask the board please approve said minutes.
Move. Got a motion by Carl, second by Sheila. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Concerned citizen, there are none on my list, none signed up, so we'll move on to our next scheduled matter. Public hearing. No public hearing? We'll move on to our consent agenda. Yeah, see the motion on no consent agendas?
Make a motion for approval.
I'll second the motion for approval.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Now we're down to supervisors. Supervisor Sheila Jones.
I think that, uh, I think my issue is regarding PRV and they wanted to make their three appointments again. And I think there's been a little mix-up because I thought I sent those names to Shelton, but he doesn't have them. So, uh, I'm gonna have to wait till next meeting.
Sound great to me. Uh, we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting, uh, Shelton. Moving on down to business item. We got Sam, Lee. All right. Request for tax exemption.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
If you will, just tell them where you're from and what you want.
Okay.
See, can we help you out or not?
All right. Um, we, we're, we're, we were operating a, a church in Raymond, Mississippi, right at, right at the, uh, the edge of Raymond and Clinton off of Spring Ridge Road. And then we have recently purchased, uh, a building in original Mississippi. And we, we plan to, we will relocate our, our, our church to that property. And at the, at the, at the 360 Town Center Boulevard in originally.
Mike, have you filled out that application?
Yes, but I have one concern.
Mm-hmm.
I'm trying to pull it up, but I read it this morning. And the board knows, the board knows that, uh, churches are generally exempt.
Mm-hmm.
That would normally be the case here and still might be. But in the application on the second page, the application as the question was, any part of the property you want to be exempt? At least, you said yes.
Yes, sir. That, that was gonna be the next thing I, I was gonna mention, yes, sir.
Churches are exempt, but you can't use exemption privilege for profit purposes. Right? So, I think I remember it said you get a thousand one hundred square feet at least.
Yes, sir.
So what, nine hundred, two hundred thousand?
Yes, sir.
That's ten percent of your total square foot you are exempt for.
Yes, sir.
So, what about that? They wouldn't be able to do that.
All right, you got any comments on that?
So, the question I was, uh, thank you for addressing that. On, on the part that we are using for the church that has not been leased, would that be exempt? Or does this just get thrown out the window altogether? That's, that's kind of what, uh...
It's like a church, it's like a church using its property. It's a host of fish fry business.
One, one of the reasons is 'cause we, we purchased this building with an existing lease already in. And so when we purchased the building, that, that came along with, with, with the, with the agreement when we purchased the building.
And that's fine. But if you're getting nine hundred, two hundred dollars a month, for someone else to use a part of the building, you're getting a hundred percent exemption for from the county. That's not a lot, so...
Do you do partial?
Yeah.
You have to cut out the...
Take the portion out there.
Thousand six, that one thousand six hundred square foot.
Mm-hmm.
And except that maybe and not except the others.
And I have the lease here as well. That wasn't, I didn't include it in the app. Yeah, I understand, yes, sir.
Well, it makes sense to me that we would go ahead and just say, uh, do an exemption basically for, was that, uh, eighty-nine point, uh, three percent? Whether it turns out to be since ten, ten point seven percent is being utilized, um, as a income.
Yes, sir.
Uh, then I will, we would have to, uh, do that. And, and, and that's easily recognizable from our tax assessor and, and everybody, uh, once we do this. Mike?
I don't know. I mean, it is inside of the space you already use as the church. So is it on an annex property? Is it in the middle of the church or?
So, it's, it's, it was an office suite. The design of the building is an office suite. And they just have, he's, um, the, the real estate partners, he's been there, I don't know how many years, for a long time. So, when we purchased the building, that, I guess that just, um, just came with the building, the, that lease. And so, um, we, we stated on the application that yes, there is a current tenant there who we are receiving income from. Yes, sir.
When was that lease again?
Uh, in twenty twenty-two of December.
Mike, is it any way that we could get him to bring a, uh, design or, you know, showing us? And where we could have it on record for the tax assessor and, you know, and then that way we can work off of that, that description.
Yeah, yes, sir.
But do you intend to lease it like leases over this year? Or do you intend to extend this or?
If not, he can come back next year, you know?
You ask for public dollars? For an operation inside your building that you're getting money for, so they can't do that, all of it.
Mike, let's just ask him to bring back a, a description of the property that he's leasing.
Okay.
The way we can have it in the minutes. And then as Supervisor Banks said, we can exclude that from the piece of property itself.
Okay, yeah.
And then that way it'll be in the minutes.
Yeah. So, a design of the, a design of the property where, where, where that portion is being leased? And then I guess the contract, the actual contract where we're receiving rent?
You can, just, just work with Mike.
Okay.
And he'll have it, he'll work with you for the next board meeting.
Yes, sir.
To be able to have it and have it in the minutes where everybody will understand exactly what we're talking about.
If you just answer question number fourteen, that would say, it says, it says about this lease, you need to detail the description of the leasing group that he's associated. There's a percentage of the county here, but it's utilized by some organization. And, uh, the ground to build structure, could be reduced? Just answer the, if you just answer...
Fourteen?
Fourteen, fifteen.
Okay. Okay.
But you said not half.
Um, yes, sir. At, at, at the time, it, it was leased, there was a, in, in, in existing contract. Uh, the idea is that, that the church would like to use all, all the facility. It's just that we have this, when we purchased the, the building, there was already an existing, that was, uh, so... Um, I didn't, I didn't know how to address, I didn't know how to properly answer that as well. And so I just kinda left it as is and, um, I, I tried to get some clarification and...
If you will, just work with our attorney and, and, and he'll, he'll work, he'll help you work through it.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Have it on the agenda for the next...
Okay, so just answer, um, do I need to meet with you separately or?
I'll give you my phone number.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And you have my, my email address on the application, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And next is, uh, county engineer, Tim Bryan. Tim.
Y'all are going fast, I was out there talking.
All right.
All right, first item I have for you is the, uh, word of the contract for King Ranch at Highway twenty-two. On December fourteenth, we took bids and the engineering department recommends that the board approve the lowest bidder, who is Hempeel Construction, for six hundred and fifty thousand, sixty-three dollars. And also authorize board president to sign the contract once it is concurred by M.D.A.
Motion.
Motion by Sheila, second by Carl. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. It's been a long time coming on that intersection.
Yes, sir, we're getting close. Getting close. All right, on January the eleventh, twenty twenty-two, we received two bids for the Megasite Waterwell. And we recommend that the board approve and award the contract to the lowest bidder, Lane Christensen's Company, for two million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. And again, to authorize board president to sign the contract. With this one, you'll remember this money is coming from MDA as part of the, uh, Megasite improvements.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Sheila. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, next item, everybody's...
Moving right along.
All right, summary change order for H and M Construction. This is for Oakfield Boulevard Drainage Improvements. Summary change order reduces the overall cost of the, uh, contract by forty thousand, two hundred dollars. And we ask that the, uh, board also approve the final payment in the amount of thirty-one thousand, six seventy-eight, thirty-four.
Down motion.
Motion.
Motion by Sheila.
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, and the next one I need to change a little bit. We, we've already approved the change order number one. We did that at the twentieth meeting. So, at this point, I just request that the board, uh, approve pay request three, which is the final pay request closing this project out in the amount of forty-five thousand, two oh five, sixty.
And this is item number thirty?
Thirty-one.
Uh, thirty-one.
One, okay.
Thirty-one.
My move.
Motion by Carl. I second it. Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, next item I have is, uh, engineering contract with Mendrop Engineering, the amount of fifty-four hundred dollars for surveying services. This is to allow us to make sure that we stay on public right of way or easements when we do the Abernathy Road Bridge project.
Mm-hmm, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, we're gonna do that.
Moving right along.
I plan to advertise that in the next thirty days. As soon as I get them under contract and tell me where I can go.
Thank you.
All right, next two items I have are final plats. The first is, uh, Cedar Ridge Phase Two. This is all private, um, there is no public infrastructure associated with this development.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Sheila. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, my final item is Pinehurst Phase One at Caroline. This is a final plat. Development contains forty-five lots on roughly sixteen point three two acres. We do have a letter of credit for the final surface lift with asphalt.
Ooh, who is that, who this blowing to?
This is in Carl's district.
Motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, Tim, before you sit down, tell me, on, on the lease road, the initial plan, as I understood it, was to get two feet on either side, right?
It was two feet total.
So what's the standard width of a county road?
If, if I was building a new one, I would tell you eleven foot.
So what are we going to end up? We're fixing to have hundreds and hundreds of new houses on that road. Where are we gonna sit when this, when Ralph's done paving the road, huh?
We'll have two eleven-foot lanes.
And that's standard?
That's standard.
In your opinion?
Yes, we, that is wider than most in the county. Most of our county roads honestly are ten-foot lanes to nine and a half foot lanes.
Okay.
Yep. Might be a couple eight.
Yeah, it may be. Well, yeah, there's several eights.
All right, Tim, thank you. Scott waits.
Morning, board, Mr. President. Uh, just got two quick items. Uh, first item is Abby Johnson. This is request place mobile home in a residential district. She does have a medical hardship located at one seventy-six Brown Road East in Supervisor District Five.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve.
There you go.
Second by Carl, any discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Go take care of grandma, Ms. Johnson. All right.
Uh, next item is a preliminary plat, Highland Springs Part One. Uh, it's the first part of that doing nine lots at this time, located off Robinson Springs Roads in Supervisor District Two.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Trey, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have.
Scott, uh...
Yes, sir.
Check on that lot right there by the post office this week. Uh, what's his name? I think it, Sid...
Sidney Davis.
Check on, they haven't done anything else on it.
Yes, sir.
So see what's going on there.
We'll do it.
All right, got our attorney here? Let me right now.
Paul, I have something. I, I found the letter. Cynthia typed up the letter for, for the PRV people with the PRV, um, nominees, Ben Evans, Stacy Wall, Gary Rogers. And it looks like she mailed it on the twenty-second, so it's already done. Thank you, Ronnie.
You're welcome.
Oh, that's right, oh, never mind. Yeah, I need to get another one of those letters, though. Ronnie, can you get Cynthia to do me one?
One of those people moved out of state.
We just appointed three new people.
What I'm talking about from that letter?
Yeah. Well, I think Stacy Wall is moving too. Okay, so thank you, Ronnie.
All right, Shelton, you don't know me's up. I might get a chance to make my basketball game tonight awesome.
We're working on it. Two items, sir, I direct you to the first item that's listed as ARPA lost revenue determination. This is American Rescue Fund Rescue Program, uh, money from the federal government. Uh, I'm not asking you tonight to allocate the money. I'm asking you strictly to determine how we want to calculate lost revenue under the rule. The original rule included a fairly complex formula that could be applied at the end of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three to determine lost revenue under the ARPA formula. That is the only option that you had before January of this year. In January of this year, Treasury Department issued a, uh, new and final rule that said you can just determine that ten million dollars is your lost revenue. There are only thirteen counties in the state of Mississippi that received more than ten million dollars. So those thirteen counties have to make a determination. Do you want to accept ten million as your lost revenue? Or do you want to go through the formula to determine lost revenue? Unfortunately, you're one of the thirteen. So I just need you to tell me if you want to, uh, use the ten million dollar standard amount or if you want us to actually make the calculation. And the reason I'm asking you is we have to tell the federal government by January thirty-one which path we are going to pursue.
So this being said, the ten million could be applied to say Reunion Bridge or Bozeman Road?
The, the ten, the lost revenue, under the rule, lost revenue can be used for government services. It cannot be used to shore up a pension plan. It cannot be used to make debt service payments. And it cannot be used to replace a, uh, a lowered tax levy.
So Reunion Bridge will be qualified?
That would be a project that could be.
I think we have several of them. We have Bozeman Road, Reunion Bridge, Phase Three.
Livingston Vernon Road.
We, we have several infrastructure...
No, I'm sorry.
Wow.
Yep.
Projects that we, that could be used on. And I think it has to be a, to a certain level as well, uh, if I recall correctly.
What does that mean?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
The project has to be moving forward.
Oh, right, it has to be something that is spent, uh, committed and spent. I, I wanna say that twenty twenty-four is the deadline that it has to be spent. Okay, four years, okay.
But the project has to be at a certain, at a certain point as well, I think.
Uh, they refer to it as pay-go, basically pay-as-you-go project, but that you're not, uh, that you're not using this money to pay back debt service.
Aye.
Yeah, that was, I would just like to see that we got this money, we get the best bang for our buck. I hear the state legislature say they gonna, uh, match, uh, the money that we sent down there and requesting for a project. So, we need to try to look at the best bang for the buck. And, and just my thought is, we just choose the route or the, or the, or using of the ten million and, uh, with other projects. And that would be a motion.
Sure. Mr. Griffin, this for a discussion. I know that we have, we have executive session tonight to have an update on, um...
Sewer.
On water and sewer. And so, um, I don't disagree with your motion. It just might be best if we hear that.
That first.
Hear that first and then we can kinda decide on where, you know, where all of it can be spent. You know, as far as allocated, not spent, but allocated. So I would, I would just ask, let's hear that update first.
I, I reaffirm that motion.
Okay, so we move on to the next item then. The next item is the January jobs report. This is also, uh, we've got an error in the label. It says request for cash from MDA, but this is strictly a jobs report on the Fasinal project. You may remember that we received a, a DIP grant from MDA for, uh, infrastructure, uh, work at Fasinal. And they had to commit to X number of jobs being, um, provided. And this is the quarterly report that has to be submitted through the county about the number of jobs they provide. So if you would approve this for the board president's side.
Will approve. Motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Sheila. Discussion, none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Moving right along to our comptroller in the side.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first item I have for you, um, are the budget amendments and the interfind cash transfers.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The second item is the approval of the general claims docket with one reduction. We reduce one of the invoices on there by twenty-seven hundred dollars, tw- two thousand, seven hundred, twenty-eight dollars.
Motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The next item is the payroll docket for January fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion for approval.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And the last item is the approval of the fleet corps claim docket.
Motion by Carl. Second by Trey. Discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. All right. Ronnie, lot?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Randy, Jeremy, Sheriff, Tucker.
One item, Mr. President, uh, authorization to bill Mississippi Department of Corrections, November twenty twenty-one inmate billing total of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-two cents.
Move the bill. Motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
All right, uh, no business.
I've got, well, I wanna ask one more, I wanna, I need to clarify one more time. So this letter that I'm supposed to send to the governor and that Cynthia's got one from last year. If I go ahead and get this information to Cynthia, can, can, can she go ahead and mail it to the governor? Do we need to approve it before it gets mailed?
We will have to approve that.
Okay, is it gonna be just like the one? It's the same one that's on our...
You got the name?
I, I have the letter from January of twenty twenty. There are three names on this letter. Do you know the names that you want to?
You know what, I can't remember, that's my problem. I, I can't remember the names.
Well, they're on that letter.
No, this is from last, this is a year ago. This letter's from a year ago. And see, it's, I know that some of them are the same, but like Stacy Wall is moving. So I know he's not gonna be on the list.
We'll, we'll, by next meeting, will it be too late?
No, I don't think so. I just know that, well, the governor called me and wants it, that's all.
Okay.
But we don't know the three names that...
I do know it at, at home and it may be on my phone in the car, but I don't know it right this second.
If it good next meeting, we just...
Okay.
Do it at the top of the next meeting. Yo, all right, any new business? It's not a gift for going to executive session.
Mr. President, uh, tonight, back in, uh, December, we had planned to have a public meeting, a public hearing tonight on the abandonment of Swamp Road.
Yeah.
That has never been advertised. So if we want to continue with the hearing on the abandonment of Swamp Road, I would ask that you set a hearing date of the first meeting in March, that you authorize the county surveyor to craft the legal description for the road and authorize the clerk to advertise the public hearing.
Move.
Did you all of you just say?
There's a motion by Carl, second by myself. Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right.
All right, I see we got, some people came into the room. Uh, I'm gonna recognize Mr. Andrew Hughes as the chairman of the Central Madison County Fire District. And I think he got some people he gonna introduce there.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Right, we are the Central Madison County Fire Protection Commissioners. I am the chairman, Andrew Hughes. My co-chairman is Dustin Bulllock. Commissioner Jackson. I'm trying to call, think of his first name.
Robert, Robert.
Robert Jackson. And none other, last but not least, Ms. April Love.
Hey, Ms. April.
And Mr. Timothy Chambers couldn't be with us today. So these are the commissioners for the Central Madison County Fire District. And we'd be glad to work with you and try to get some service done for the whole Madison County.
We just thank you all for being willing to serve. Being the fire commissioners, stressful job, especially for all that pay that you get.
Yeah.
You know, you probably would have to pay some income tax back 'cause you getting paid so much. But, uh, we, we just wanna thank y'all for the, for your service. Thank you for your service. And feel free, anytime you need place to meet, come here, give me Shelton, he'll direct you in the place that open for y'all to meet.
Okay, thank you all.
All right, thank you all.
Mr. President, if they, uh, maybe need to ask them, but if they got a contract signed yet... Mr. President, if they, uh, maybe need to ask them, but if they got a contract signed yet with, uh, City Canton for services?
Mike probably knew it. I think they said it, they, city.
Do what now?
I could answer that.
Okay. I mean, they don't necessarily have to come in. I was just, just curious, actually.
Uh, this boy voted to approve a contract.
Mm-hmm.
But Canton itself has yet to approve it.
Yeah.
Do what now?
You're sitting at, you're sitting at their doorstep, uh, at Canton, waiting on Canton to sign off on.
So the central issue approved the God drive to Canton.
Right.
But Canton had yet approved it with that. So the answer's no.
Okay.
Are they still servicing that area?
They always were.
Now, are they still servicing that area?
As far as I know, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you.
We'll see, give me get some fire out of this.
Okay.
It probably sitting on the mayor's desk.
Probably. Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Are we going to executive session?
Executive session.
And there's a motion to go into a close determination so we can determine whether or not we're going to executive session.
Litigation and economic development.
Motion by Carl. Second by Gerald.
Gerald.
Acquisition real estate.
You get that, Ronnie?
Now I'll give you that again.
Acquisition of real estate.
And litigation.
And litigation.
And economic development.
And economic development.
All in.